First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, support.
Have a motion support. Any additions, corrections, changes? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is public comment. Anybody wishing public comment? We have, we'd like you to state your name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time.
Hello, Destiny Wilkins, Administrator at Jackson County Medical Care Facility. I do not have a report today, so I just wanted to share two little tidbits with you as commissioners so that you are aware of a few changes. We did have a change in our accountant as of 10-1. So we have changed to another consulting accountant. Her name is Mary Ann Connor, and she has worked with us in the past. She's very skilled in long-term care finance. And we also received our new Medicaid rate that started on 10-1, so we received our official rate letter, which brings our Medicaid rate from $351.88 to $394.06, which is an increase of $42.18 per resident per day, which roughly based on the last year of census should equate to approximately $2 million additional dollars in revenue for 2026. So I just wanted to share those few little tidbits with you, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve last month's minutes.
So moved, support.
Have a motion support. Any changes, additions? All those in favor who's approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. Next item we have is appointments. And as you can see, we got a flurry of Wellwise's appointments here at the last minute. I propose that we postpone so we have more time to review, maybe talk to a couple applicants that we have interest in. And with that, I'd like a motion to postpone.
Motion postponed. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next item is foresee Wellwise's semi-annual report. We have Kara Lorenz Goings to give us that report. Good to see you today.
Good to see you. Thank you for having us. I'm Kara Lorenz Goings. Nice to see you all. I am the CEO at Wellwise Services, Area Agency on Aging. I've took over that position May 1st of this year. I have been at the agency for 11 years, worked with older adults, adults with disabilities, and their caregivers my whole career. I actually did a stint at Jackson Department on Aging. So just very good to be here, and I just wanted to remind everybody, our mission is to support older adults, adults with disabilities, and their caregivers to remain independent in our community, which is Jackson, Lenaway, and Hillsdale Counties. You have a report before you. I'm going to go over some highlights. Our report details spent older Americans Act funding in Jackson County through August 31st, 2025. It is not representative of all budgeted or awarded funds. And I just want to remind everyone, our contractors are permitted to submit transfer requests to allow for budget flexibility within the current fiscal year. Our contractors submit monthly cash requests and budget reports, and monthly meetings are held to discuss funding and trends in spending. I also want to go over our area implementation plan, also known as the AIP. The Commission on Services of Aging approved this fiscal year 2026 area implementation plan in August. Nicole Baker, who joined me today, and I went in front of the Commission on Aging with the state, and they were very complimentary of the plan, had great questions about our communities. No changes were made to the draft you all received in June, and the final version will be made available on our website. Also, our three-year community needs survey will launch next month. We really rely on that to look at needs in our communities. The data from this survey will inform our agency's work and that our contractors during the next multi-year cycle, that would be fiscal year 2027 to 2029. To kick off these efforts, Wellwise and Jackson Department on Aging will co-host a community conversation facilitated by the Michigan Department Health and Human Services at the Crouch Center on November 17th at 9:30. We invite you all to attend. Information gathered at this event will be used to inform the state plan on aging. So I want to go over some other agency updates. Since our last presentation in March, Wellwise Services has presented at two national conferences and received two national awards, one for our Community Education Department and also for our Safe Haven program. We will also present a session at our statewide conference next month. That's the Area Agency on Aging Association Conference. And additional sessions are proposed for conferences in '26. We did also just about a couple weeks ago, we're told that we will be, we submitted for a presentation at the American Society on Aging Conference in Atlanta this spring. So we'll be talking about our Safe Haven program in April there. We're always very proud of these programs. At our smaller area agency on aging in the state, we seem to lift programs that are nationally recognized. We're very proud of that. We remain heavily involved in advocacy efforts to educate our elected officials, both in the state of Michigan and at the federal level. Last week, Nicole and I were able to meet with Congressman Tim Walberg. He visited our office right in Brooklyn. We discussed the needs of older adults, adults with disabilities, and their caregivers. Like many other agencies, we are closely monitoring the federal shutdown, and we're working with our contractors and provider agencies to review contingency plans. Currently, there is no service disruptions in our region. Federal Older Americans Act funds are expected to be level funded. At the passage of the last week's state budget confirmed mostly level funding as well. Guidance on specific line items has not yet been released from the Michigan Department Health and Human Services, but Wellwise was encouraged to see that the direct care worker premium pay rate of $3.40 per hour is continuing into fiscal year 2026. Jackson Department on Aging has joined Disability Connections, Branch Hillsdale, St. Joseph County Community Health Agency, and Lenaway and Hillsdale County Senior Services Center to provide person-centered options counseling services in addition to Medicare counseling under the My Options Program. That's a lot of information, but basically, a lot of that is if people call our agency, we're working with these partners to deliver what I call a lot of navigation through resources that are needed throughout our communities. Also, that Medicare counseling is specifically about Medicare. The program seeks to expand access to information about long-term services and support in fiscal year 2026 using a statewide call center, which has been successful in several other states. I also want everybody to be aware that the Medicare Part D open enrollment is starting October 15th. You can reach out to us, as well as Jackson Department on Aging, for an appointment in the account in our region. That's a very busy time of year for our, you know, non-biased counselors and our regional site leader to help people with the right Medicare Part D drug plan for them. So we're excited about that work. We are working closely with our contractors to complete the fiscal year 2025 year-end closeout procedures and look forward to tabulating programmatic and fiscal reports, which demonstrate the impact of services in Hillsdale, Jackson, and Lenaway Counties. We're also gearing up for our annual Holiday at Home campaign, where donations support holiday gifts for our participants and community members. We will share more information with all of you in coming weeks. People can donate at our website or also at our agency, so we're excited about that campaign. Also, I just wanted to mention our My Choice Waiver Program. That's a Medicare waiver program that's an alternative to nursing home placement. We work with, for many of our programs, about 80 providers that we contract with in the three counties for this work, but also programs we offer. We were able to serve a record number of people in our region for that. For fiscal year '25, we hit 930 individuals. And I want you to also know, we are seeing record numbers across programming with the calls that are coming into our agency and the support that's needed for the population we serve. I wanted to also mention, we received nice accolades last week from some staff, and it was related to the recent Crouch Senior Center dance. We, our community education person was there to do our Connection Cafe, and she stopped by the dance, and we're always just very impressed with the senior centers of Jackson County and the work they're doing there. And that's all. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Questions? Oh, we're going to let you off early. Easy today.
Thanks.
Thanks for your report.
Yep, thank you.
Motion to receive report.
Support. Have a motion to support. Aye. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item we have is the Department on Aging, and Danielle Paquette.
Good afternoon. I have two things on the agenda today. And the first one is looking at a request to purchase a Meals on Wheels van. We did receive a donation from the Friends of Jackson seniors, and this is related to the Supes on for Seniors event that we did in 2025. They had raised just over $28,000 through that event, and they actually awarded up to $45,000 for a Meals on Wheels van. Working with the My Deal program, we would be able to purchase the van for $40,496. We're looking to replace a 2014 vehicle that we have in our fleet. That vehicle currently has 128,726 miles on it. Throughout the years, we have put over $17,000 into that vehicle. If we do not replace it, we're going to continue to put dollars towards keeping that vehicle within the fleet. So we're looking to have a motion to go ahead and purchase that new vehicle.
Thank you for that report. Do we have any questions?
Not a question, a compliment. I'd like to thank this organization, Jackson, Friends of Jackson seniors. I don't know who they are, but they have donated funds many times. So I would just like to thank them for their assistance and their generosity.
Thank you. They're a nine-member board, and they do meet like five times a year at the Department on Aging, and their mission is to support senior services in Jackson County. So, and they really are doing a great job with their big fundraiser.
Doris, you had a question?
Thank you. So my only question is, I just was curious to how many vehicles do you have in your fleet?
We try to keep 16 vehicles. At a time, we can have 14 vans on a given day. So the two extra allow if something has to get in for repairs or something breaks down, things like that. But definitely, you know, you can start your day with a flat tire. That happens to everybody, and that could be our day, and so we always have those extra vans.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Nothing further. Mr. Chair, if there's no further question, I'll for motion to accept.
I'll accept that motion.
Support.
And we have support, and this is an action item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I would like to go ahead with my regular report. And again, thank you for allowing that purchase of the vehicle to support our mission of getting those meals out to the seniors in Jackson County. We're currently working on our staff training. Again, we try to do this each October, where we can bring all our staff together. Our aging leadership team is planning a day on October 30th. We kind of plan ahead for that so that our kitchen staff and our drivers and our home care workers can dedicate that first morning part of their day to being at this training. We're working with the nonprofit network, who is going to be the presenter for that. And it really is trying to bring cohesion to our team. We definitely have a lot of people that are out in the field. That's where they start their day and sometimes end their day. They may not always be right at the Department on Aging, and it's really trying to look at making sure our communication is going well, that everybody has our goals and our mission in mind as we serve the older adults in Jackson County. We're also planning ahead for the 2026 Supes on for Seniors, and it actually is starting off very well. We've received some sponsorships, and we haven't even sent out letters. It's people that are familiar with the event and have already submitted sponsorship. So we have three sponsorships so far. We've raised over $8,000 just with those sponsorships. We also applied for the Tower Tour certificate. It was a big item in our auction last year. It brought in about $3,000, and we thought, well, let's go ahead and try and see if we can receive that certificate again this year. It took us 10 years the first time to get awarded that certificate, and surprisingly, we actually were drawn again. So the Friends of Jackson seniors will be doing another live auction for the 2026 event. So that will be part of their planning process as we move forward with that. And again, that's on March 10th, 2026. In your packet, you'll see the most current grant award that we have from Wellwise Services. And just like kind of what Kara had mentioned, working with their organization on transfer request if things come up, and you can see in this statement of contract award, the transfer in federal funds from congregate to home-delivered meal program, where we see, definitely see that higher need. There was a transfer request for $81,000 to help spend that grant award and hit the service that's most needed by our elders in the community. Just a couple program recaps. I know that Leslie Krantz was here last month, and she kind of highlighted some different programs that we had happening with Wellwise Services. One was the Fall Prevention Program. That was a great event. We had 49 people attend that. There's a comment from a senior that attended that event who really benefited from the therapist information about adjusting her cane. It definitely helped her mobility. A few days after that event, we actually had a senior call on our enrichment coordinator and comment that she had taken a fall at home, and she's like, what did Martha tell me to do? And remembering what she had learned during that presentation, she was able to get herself back off the floor. So again, positive feedback from people that were able to attend that. We also had our Senior Safety Seminar, and this was a mini-grant that we had with Wellwise Services. And we had 27 people attend the seminar that American One had presented on about frauds and scams in our community and things to be aware of. Great information, good questions from participants. And then we had this shred day. We actually had 59 people come to that. So a lot of people look forward to that and be able to feel like they can securely get rid of their information. So those programs really do provide that peace of mind for older adults and caregivers in the Jackson community. Recently, just to recognize Eaton Employee Group that came out and packed emergency meals for us. They packed over 600 meals, and these are the shelf-stable products that go out to our homebound elders for inclement weather days. And also, anybody that newly starts the program is provided with an emergency meal bag. So it has two meals that they would be able to pull out if we're unable to deliver for a particular reason, and those definitely are used throughout the season. We are planning another emergency meal packing day with Dawn Foods. They had reached out and wanted to support the work that we do in the community, and they're going to be coming in November to do some packing of meals for us. And also, they want a paintball for Supes on, so some great things are happening. And that's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll take a motion to receive the report.
Moved, support.
And motion support. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Health Department Monthly Report. Kristin Pluta.
Good afternoon. I remember a good afternoon, not good morning. We just spoke about that with Commissioner Snow. I have a pretty standard report that highlights all of the information and things that are going on at the Health Department. Couple things that I want to point out, just make mention of. I'm happy to take any questions on anything that's in the report, but a couple things just to make note of. We had been waiting, the last time I was here, for the state to pass their budget so that we could finalize, you know, kind of where we ended with all of our grants and all of our allocations that come in through the state. That thankfully has happened, and so now we're in the process. Everything seems pretty favorable. It doesn't look like we lost any of our funding streams. However, we still don't have final allocation award amounts for all of that. So through the budgeting process for this year, as you know, our fiscal year started on October 1st. We made some best guesses based on historical information and where the state thought we would come in. So at this point, we're soon to be on track, and we'll, you know, make any amends should we need to as we go forward and get all of our grant contracts signed. The only other thing that I specifically want to point out that is not in this is just as we go into respiratory virus season, you know, there's a lot of between COVID and flu and kiddos with RSV and things like that. I just want to remind everyone here and just everyone across the county that we are able to bill for services. So if you have commercial insurance currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield or with Priority Health, and then we're working on bringing others, that we can see you for those kind of immunization appointments or I guess it'd just be immunization appointments that showed you need. So we've offered that. It's nice to be able to offer that to, you know, county employees themselves where, that are covered by the county health insurance, you know, or other individuals that may have, you know, private insurance in the community as well. So just want to point that out, but if there's any questions on the report, any specifics in there, like I said, it's pretty standard, pretty typical information.
Tony, you had your hand raised first. We'll let you go first.
Good morning or good afternoon. Got a few questions on your report. The item, Teen Pregnancy Prevention Initiative.
Mm-hmm.
The third bullet point, lesson on identity at DaVinci, 21 students. Lesson on identity, what was that?
Well, I can't tell you specifically what it was, but we have to follow for this program. We follow a program called the Teen Outreach Program.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone for me?
We have to follow to fidelity, meaning we have a curriculum that is given to us by the state and approved through the state that has had the same, has a standard set of lessons throughout the curriculum throughout the year. So if you want specifics, I could get, you know, specifically more information about that, but it just highlights one of the, you know, one of the many. A lot of times, most of our Empowering Youth Today through the Abstinence Program and the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Initiative, most of those are really geared, we don't get into the specifics, but we gear towards, you know, empowering our students to stand up for themselves and to be advocates for their own health and wellness and that kind of thing. So I don't know, I don't have the details on that specific, you know, bullet point of that curriculum, but it is something that we have to follow, like I said, to fidelity to the Teen Outreach Program.
I guess my concern, I might as well state it. There's a mental illness prevalent in our society, gender dysphoria, where people can't seem to figure out what identity they are, what identity, what gender God gave them at birth. Is this dealing with the mental disorder of identity?
Yeah. We would not get into specifics. It would all be about self-promotion, self-identity, taking care of oneself. You know, we get into the, even when we call it the teen pregnancy prevention, very little of our curriculum topics actually focus on the sexuality part of teen pregnancy. A lot of it is focusing on building positive relationships, having positive dating relationships, all of those kind of things. So we don't get into the specifics of, I think, where you're trying to go with that. But I think the best way I could say it is that it's being who you are, finding positive, you know, role models in the community and in your environment.
All right. And the next bullet point, intro and identity lessons for.
It would be the same. That would have been the same.
Same type of stuff?
Yes, because that grant started October 1st. So as I mentioned, it goes through that curriculum, you know, lesson one, lesson two, lesson three. And as we restart those at the beginning of a grant year and the beginning of a school year, they'd be the same, it'd be the same lesson again, because we have to teach that with that fidelity to that program.
Okay. I see you offer, you're out in the community a lot, which is good. I like that. Under that same Teen Pregnancy Prevention Initiative, the additional activities, the first one, mental health rock painting craft at Jackson District Library. One middle school student showed up for that? How many staff and how much planning, what was the cost of providing that for one student?
This is where I want to be. I can't tell you specifically the cost. It would have been, you know, an hour's worth of an employee's time. We do that rock painting, so as far as supplies and anything like that, we've done that in other locations and in other, you know, I believe that's part of something they do in their curriculum. So the supplies and that kind of thing would be very negligible. You know, we are trying to meet people where they are and in different places, and sometimes it's great, and you'll see 50-something people there, and sometimes there's one. We're really doing, you know, we will probably, you should not see another one of those scheduled at the Eastern District branch of the District Library, you know, with only one participant. you know, with only one participant. But at the same point, it's still significant to notice that, you know, someone did come out and reach out and had, you know, some conversations with someone from our department. So, but we do monitor those for, you know, all of the activities. So when you see on the next page and all of the different outreach activities, we keep track of that, and we try to go where we're most needed. And sometimes that's a success, and sometimes it's not.
Okay, so you do track the amount of participation you get.
Yep.
And as I see on the next page, Whole Child Summit, two individuals showed up.
Those are meaningful conversations that we had with people. A lot of times, we are at a tabling event. And so our health educators or our other employees are at the event, passing out information, taking, you know, we hand out little hand sanitizers or different things like that. A lot of times, we don't count every person that walked by our table and, you know, took something or that we said hello to. It is about tracking the meaningful conversations or conversations where we gave a referral to something or we passed out information about a program we may have. So, you know, that number may seem low there, but those, we were also there doing other things and reaching other people, just not in quite a significant of a way as the people that we're actually counting.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is it appears that some of these events are not well-attended. And budgets are tight. Your budget's tight. What you do is valuable in the community. And I just hope you're keeping track of how much response you're getting from the community and if the expense doesn't worth, doesn't justify having that activity repeated. Maybe cut some of these.
Absolutely.
Your budget's tight, and it's probably going to get tighter.
Just, I completely agree with you, and that's why I said, I mean, we started tracking all of our outreach everywhere we go, how many conversations and things like that we have. One of the things, though, that is, you know, I will say that every, especially when you're in our community health and health education, that is a big portion of what our, the Health Department is there to do is to educate and promote public health for the whole. So, you know, I just would caution that we wouldn't want to, you know, I see what you're saying, if we're reaching to. But it's hard to say if we made a meaningful difference in two people's lives that day, then that, you know, is worth the cost of a health educator being there for an hour. But I wouldn't, you know, I also can see the balance of, you know, like the rock painting. And, you know, we didn't reach the intended, you know, we start these with a goal and who we're out there and trying to meet that day and at that activity. And then we evaluate it at the end. And there are plenty of places that we haven't returned to for that simple reason, that it isn't.
Okay. I appreciate your answers, and I appreciate your work in the community.
Thank you.
Darius, you had a question?
Yes, sir, thank you. So my question, or my first question is similar to Commissioner Bear's. I was just curious, as we have these variety of programs that I do support, and I appreciate the work that goes into it. But I'm just curious, what type of advertising do we do to get the individuals out to the program?
Well, a lot of our programs aren't, I mean, besides trying to bring people in to have immunizations or to know that our sexual health clinic is there and available, you know, when you're looking at our school-based programming and some of those kind of things, we're reaching and working with the schools directly or, you know, like the after-school King Center, those kind of places, specifically more than we are reaching to the general population. Because a lot of our programming isn't, you know, for just an individual. It's targeted towards a specific population of people. So you will see some of that. We've had, it looks like the formatting didn't format correctly on this, but there's a digital outreach, and I know I've reported here a couple different times about targeted Spotify ads where we've had some, you know, like specific COVID funding or specific respiratory virus funding where we can, you know, send that information out. But again, that's much more of a time to, less about bringing people to us or less about bringing people to the Health Department for our specific programming and much more about bringing people to the awareness of, you know, what's going on and what time of year it is and what, you know, we should be amped up and looking for, whether it be environmental health concerns, like, you know, tick and mosquito-borne illnesses and stuff in the spring and summer or, you know, at this point of the year in the RSV. We don't, there is no benefit to, you know, a lot of our program, we're pretty, we don't make money on how many people come and see us. So whether or not we immunized everyone in the county that works for the county for their flu shot, we, we're not neutral there on that. We're just trying to, if not in the, using our grant funding for those things. We're just trying to recoup the cost of being able to do that. So I don't know if that completely answered your question, but.
Kind of. So I would recommend, if at all possible, I know you had mentioned you kind of worked with the various school districts, but I know most of the school districts around have email blasts and voicemail and text messaging blasts, things like that. So if there's ways to send that information out that way so that they're getting straight to parents, I think that might help with numbers.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I did put in this report is on the second page, there's the, at the bottom, they're probably pretty hard to read in this format. But if you'd like, we send a monthly, we have communication with the school districts on a monthly basis. Within that, we're talking about things like when we're going to be out at the, at different schools for hearing and vision or the kindergarten oral health assessment. So when those are scheduled, when different programming things. And then there's also information on here on, like, trending communicable disease. So what the schools should be watching out for and what they need to report to us and how they report that to us. And then, like, the second page on this one that just went out for October was healthy habits, you know, reminding, and this goes to, one is geared towards the schools itself, kind of what's going on and what the schools need to do. But also, that healthy habits is meant to be distributed, you know, should the schools in those locations share, want to share that information with their staff. So I think that's great. And I think, you know, the more we can do that and the more we can reach, you know, those are just non-quantifiable things. We don't know when the school sends them out, so we have a tough time quantifying those.
Yeah, and that was actually going to be my next point, is I think this is great information for the community, but I'm wondering if there's a barrier there between getting it from your office to the school districts and if there's a way to find out if the school district is in fact passing it on to parents. Because if people don't know about the program, to Commissioner Bear's point, if people don't know about the program, then it's not going to truly benefit. Let me be careful when I say this, because it is doing some work, even if it is just one student. But I think we can have a bigger impact and good use of our resources if parents know about it. So if there's ways to kind of further push the envelope, I think it might be worth an investigation. But nonetheless, my final point is with now having the state budget passed, do you know if we're planning to have the Get Real program this summer?
Get Real is, we did a, that one was never in. The Get Real program as a whole, including, is part of, excuse me, Empowering Youth Today is the whole program. Get Real is our summer program. At this point, we did a competitive grant year for that last year in 2024 and got that, I think, for the next several years. So with the Get Real program to continue. Providing anything, you know, should change on that. But at this point, we're set for it.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Thank you. Some great questions there. So much for a quick report.
It's all right, happy to answer.
But we appreciate you being able to answer all the questions. Seeing no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive a report. And motion support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 5A claims. I'll entertain a motion to pay the claims.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Other minutes? There is, if I can get it to come up. Meeting minutes from DHHS. Please take a look at them at your leisure. Reporting schedule is next. Next month, we'll have Department on Aging, the Health Department, Lifeways, Veterans Affairs, and Michigan Works Southeast. Comes up to our second period of public comment. Public comment. See no one interested in public comment. We're going to move on to committee member comments. Darius first.
Thank you. So just wanted just to thank you, Commissioner Snell, for conducting a productive meeting today.
Thank you, Ray. Our agenda item for appointments was postponed till next month. So that will give administration a month to respond to my question here. I was going to ask it during that agenda discussion. We have a bunch of candidates for the Lifeways position. And reading through every one of these requests for appointment, I see people that are, in my opinion, just not qualified. We had a conversation before the first meeting today where I was asking how, there was only one person that I thought was qualified. And you and then Mike got into the conversation with us. You guys made the statement that what I saw is a conflict of interest. Because somebody, six of these seven people are receiving services from Lifeways. And they are the ones that are asking to be on the board of Lifeways, determining what monies get spent where. To me, that's a total conflict of interest. Of course, if I'm on the board, I want all the money channeled to where I am receiving services. So you and Mike told me that it is a policy that you have to be a client of Lifeways to be on the Lifeways board. I find that odd. Now, neither you or Mike were able to tell me. That policy is a policy written by whom? Nobody knows what that policy, so far, nobody's been able to tell me what that policy is or whose policy it is. So we've got a month before this comes back up on the agenda. I'm requesting that our administrator do the research, find out which agency, which committee, is it a county policy? It is a Lifeways policy? That the people on that board have to be clients receiving services. So I'm requesting Mike find that out and submit that for the record so we can all read that, know where the source of that criteria is for being on the Lifeways board. And if possible, reevaluate it. Do we agree with that principle? So I'm asking that that report be submitted for the record before our next month's meetings.
Steve, you had a comment on that? I couldn't answer that right now, but I'll defer to you.
You're going to comment on a comment?
As a county commissioner, I'm going to use my commissioner comment to speak on.
Says a commissioner, says committee comments.
What's that, sir?
Says committee member comments.
According to county policy, I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and I'm an ad hoc member of every committee. First, and second, without complete attendance, I'm a voting member of this committee, sir.
Good.
So I think you need to read your policies.
I have read them all.
I'm using my, you're interrupting me, sir.
I've read them all.
Mr. Shotwell has the floor.
It is state statute that the Lifeways Board be made up of certain members of the community. And those community members either need to be what's considered a primary or a secondary receiver of services of state mental health policy. Some of those are also independent members. And then we get to appoint commissioners to that. And when we created the managed healthcare system that makes up Lifeways and we joined with Hillsdale, Jackson County took on the fact that we, because we have a majority population of that, that we'd have a majority of the board members. So the state of Michigan told us that they need to be primary or secondary consumers. The policy, because it is a large organization that is a managed healthcare system that Jackson and Hillsdale County have established that this shall be the makeup of that board. And by authority of the state of Michigan, the Lifeways Board is made up of those people, sir. Just very much like we have designated people that appear on the committee that's within the Treasurer's Department, the land bank. It has a certain dedicated people that have to serve on the land bank, whether it be developers or builders, just like the listing for the committee you serve on, the materials management has designated people that have been asked to serve on it and recognized because of their thoroughness of information in dealing with that. That's where this information comes from, sir. And it's been that way since you were elected as a county commissioner. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, I already did, thank you.
Tony, second round?
Nothing in that response changes my request of the administrator. Give all of us a copy of that policy so we can read it for ourselves. Let us know what, even maybe at the bylaws of the organization, see if there is a possibility that the Board of Commissioners can change some of those requirements. So I still expect to see, receive a copy of that policy.
What?
Thank you.
What you'll pretty much get is state statute, because this is statutory members. We don't, there's no Lifeways bylaws that are going to supersede the state law. So I've been at Lifeways for many years now. We'll get you a copy of the statute. It won't be that hard. Well, Mr. Administrator? Committee comments are over, and we are adjourned.